Call to order the Claremore Cultural Development Authority meeting. Sarah, please call the roll.
Cottum, here. Felman.
Here.
Michael.
Present.
Callender.
Here.
Long.
Present.
Ruckerhoff.
Here.
Oldie.
Here.
McSpadden.
Here.
Erwood.
Thank you.
Wow, thank you. If you'd join me. Stand and join with the pledge of allegiance and invocation by Pastor Andrew Guttler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Well, I'm gonna pray Jeremiah twenty-nine, seven, that says, "But seek the welfare of the city where I have sent you." And pray to the Lord on this behalf, for in its welfare, you will find your welfare. And Father, we just declare this in this moment. We acknowledge that you have placed us where we are. We could be in any other city, but you place us here, and we acknowledge your placement. We're grateful for that. We're grateful for the history of this city, all that you've done, all that you've accomplished. We're grateful for two thousand twenty-five, that through it all, your grace has been sufficient. But Father, as we move, we're shifting into the fall season. Life's changed. School is starting back up. Responsibilities are changing. And so, Father, we just pray specifically for you to breathe upon us, breathe upon these leaders, strengthen them. May there be a fresh supply of grace and strength and health and wisdom and every resource needed to carry out every assignment that you have for us to close out this year, two thousand and twenty-five. So, Father, we just lift this night up to you, that you would be involved in every dialogue and conversation, and that you would ultimately be glorified in it all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any votes?
No.
Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Oldie.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Any items unforeseen? We have a motion to. We have a motion to approve the consent items as printed.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Ruckerhoff.
Here.
Cottum. Felman. Michael.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Oldie.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Call the roll.
Felman.
Yes.
Oldie.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Call to order the Claremore Public Works Authority meeting. Note the roll. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Oldie.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Any items unforeseen? Do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Felman.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Oldie.
Yes.
I'm number two. Discussion of possible action on change order request number one for the Heritage Hills area utility upgrades project for the deduct, yay, amount of seven hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Now, Mayor, Council, remember. False hope is not. It's a deduct, but there's, trust me, there's always a but.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So the agenda item is requesting to close out the project by this deduct change order for the Heritage Hills project.
Garrett, hold on. There we go. Sorry. Wanna make sure we had the right presentation, huh? There we go.
Okay, so, wanted to give you a brief summary of the project and where we started and how we got to where we're at. Several years ago, Todd and his crew had identified this as one of our worst areas for electric service, reliability issues, transformers catching on fire, that kind of thing. The Heritage Hills subdivision itself was fed by a three-phase line that had faulted twice, so they were actually down to one leg of that single-phase electric service that was feeding the whole subdivision. Looking at the electric system, we also knew there were some issues with the water and the sanitary sewer in that area, so we looked at a project that would fix as much of that as we could, so when we got into people's backyards, putting new electric in, we would only have to get in there one time, hopefully, for the next twenty or thirty years, not have to get back in there in another five years, so. So this is just a brief summary of that project. That's the area that it impacted, so Heritage Hills, the gates at Heritage Hills, Turnberry, the Highway eighty-eight corridor, and then the sanitary sewer serves basically the west half of the RSU campus. Contractor on the project was McGuire Brothers Construction. They've done multiple projects since I've been here in Claremore, done an excellent job on everyone so far. Can't complain about anything they've done. Always great to work with us and find solutions to problems. The engineering department, Power and Light, Public Works, all had a role in this project in some way or another. The project itself started March of twenty-two. That's when we started design. We got that project out to bid and awarded the contract in November of twenty-three. The original contract amount was four point two million, and we had about a hundred and seventy thousand in electric material that we provided. And with all the deducts on the project, we found some areas that there had been some electric that had been replaced that we weren't aware of when we'd done the design. So we were able to deduct some of that stuff out, and then, as always, we try to be conservative with our estimates, so that we're, at the end of the project, we're doing the deduct instead of an increase. So that leaves the total project cost at three point six million, and just a rough estimate of the time that we put in, design, inspection, project management, the work that Todd's crew done, the electric department on changing out the transformers and terminating services. The time that the public works guys came in and helped jet rod sewer lines and do camera work on those, we estimated that savings about one point six million on the project. So the electric, it was definitely a challenge. All of this stuff is in backyards. Subdivision that's been there for, you know, thirty, forty years at least. So you got fences to deal with, you got people's pets to deal with, all kinds of things to deal with.
Their rose gardens, their flowers.
Everything, yeah. Everything you can imagine is in that easement, so it's all gotta be moved. We do our best to move it, put it back as close as we can to what was there to start with, so. Some of that was very tight quarters. We done a lot of directional, directional boring on that side of things, so that minimized some of the disturbance, but you still gotta go in and change out the transformers, change out the junction boxes. Now, there's an example of one of the house services where you have to go from the secondary all the way to the house, so.
And again, councilors, that's our crews doing all the electric. They were putting in conduit.
Yeah.
Contractor. We went in and pulled the line.
Yeah, the contractor installed the conduit. The city crews terminated everything, replaced all the transformers, junction boxes. And that was one of the big issues that we had with this area. When it was built, they didn't split the houses up on enough transformers. So you had, you know, fifteen or twenty houses on one transformer, and they were just overloaded. And you get in this time of year when it's hot, everybody's air conditioner's running, then you got all kinds of issues, so. The totals on the electric, we replaced twelve thousand feet of two-inch, three thousand feet of, or fifty-four hundred feet of three-inch, and then about thirteen hundred feet of service conduit. Thirty-five transformers were installed. I think we probably removed twenty transformers, so we added that many on top of what we learned there and added several more junction boxes than were originally there. Sewer improvements. We smoke-tested everything, camera-inspected everything during the design phase. Identified a lot of issues with I and I. Most of the work was manhole rehab. We did a little bit of main replacement, and then there were a lot of sewer taps that were replaced or repaired.
What's I and I? I'm sorry.
Inflow and infiltration.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, rainwater getting in the sanitary sewer.
Which was causing capacity issues at lift stations and overworking the plant.
This is just one picture of an existing manhole. You can see where the groundwater's been getting in around that pipe penetration. That's, I guess you'd call it stalactite that's formed just from the groundwater coming into it. This is another manhole after we rehabbed it. About a hundred manholes were rehabbed in some form or fashion. We did replace one manhole. Twenty lamp holes, which are basically the pipe version of a manhole that's just on the end of a dead-end line, a place where you can get in to clean the line or inspect it. Thirty-seven service taps were replaced, eight hundred and seventy feet of main, and there again, most of the sanitary sewer's in the back with the electric, so. There's some more pictures of the sanitary sewer work. Now, some of that sanitary sewer's twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five feet deep. And then water improvements, we installed nine new hydrants. So those were in locations where we didn't have adequate spacing on hydrants. There were places that it was over two thousand feet of spacing between the hydrants. And twelve existing hydrants were repaired, and we painted all the hydrants in that work area, so they should be good for another twenty or thirty years, hopefully. Dead ends, we replaced, or we added eighteen hundred feet of new line to loop in the backside of Heritage Hills with the line out on Blue Star. So that'll help our water quality in that area. We added blow-offs at the dead ends that didn't have places to flush the lines. And then we had two or three locations where the water main was actually exposed in the bottom of a creek. So we got those lines lowered and got them much safer and resilient. Some of the pictures from the water work. The issues we encountered during the project, probably the biggest thing that didn't work out the way we wanted it to was the schedule, and that was partially due to the tornado that we had. We also had an abnormally wet spring last year. And then just the fact that all the utilities were in the back of the lots, we had all those issues to deal with, and then then go figure, you know, we'd get started on our project. We knew that ONG was gonna do a project in there at some point. They just happened to start it at about the same time that we got started on this project, so. So, end of the day, you know, we can't say that it was not a successful project. We improved the electric reliability for sure, improved fire protection in that area, improved our water quality, reduced a lot of the I and I that was going into the sanitary sewer. And we had citizens complaints, but our inspectors were on site. Matt Bradshaw, this is one of his first big projects to inspect. He done an awesome job trying to keep everybody happy, so.
And we met with the public, I mean, we told everybody that this part of town would be tore up for a year plus, and we were right there.
Yep.
Tornado did advocate, but I think it's what's important for me. I think that I would like the council to take and the public listening at home. When all the experts and engineers on Facebook wanna know what we're doing, this is what we're doing. One point six million dollars in savings to the taxpayers, so we can turn around and put those dollars into other infrastructure projects. Nearly six miles of electric line that that man's guys pulled in and connected and terminated. The water, the sewer issue, saved a lift station, so additional development, which will come onto that lift station that's gonna start soon across from the VA, so that lift station will have capacity. That's what we do. You don't just make a decision one day to go do something. It takes time. Takes a year to engineer. It takes time to buy right-of-way easement if you need it. We didn't need it on that time. And then it'll be next spring before we're done really, really cleaning up, or this fall before we go through another rainy season, and all of that work that we've done is settled in backyards and a few other things. So I hope we're gonna start doing more of this on completed projects, because our folks and myself, and I knew you all here, all the, what are they doing? What are they doing? This is what we're doing. We can't do it everywhere across the community at once. We gotta identify those hardest-hid places that need it. We were on the verge of having to buy generators for every house over there if we didn't get this power. Is that accurate? I mean, there was no other way to serve power to them, or have everything above ground, just laying on the ground at their homes. And so those are the things that we're trying to do and be intentional with, and make sure that the taxpayers' dollars are being spread out as far as they can and used to the best of our ability.
So the.
And that is Garrett. That's him.
So the agenda item is to request the approval of change order number one in the amount of seven hundred fifty-nine thousand four eighty-seven deduct. And that will make the final contract amount three million four hundred eighty-two thousand five thirteen.
Second. Motion is second. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Felman.
Yes.
Oldie.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Thank you. Well done, Garrett.
Good job.
Thank you.
Stop, Todd.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Felman.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
Oldie.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Call to order the Claremore City Council meeting. Note the roll. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Oldie.
Yes.
Ruckerhoff.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Cottum.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Long.
Yes. Mayor's report on appointments. I don't think I have anything other than, I suppose I have just a little bit. Awards, presentations, and communications. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This evening, if you'll recall, four years ago, I had a conversation about updating master plan for electric and was told we didn't really have one and was a top priority. Unfortunately, we experienced some issues with with substation two, and then we had some additional switching, so. But at that time, we went out and did a master services agreement, did an RFP, and we were very fortunate that a firm here in Oklahoma's got a strong local presence named CEC was awarded that master services agreement. Well, what should have been, task order number one was put off because of a substation two issue. You'll remember the summer, we had Senator Mullen here, and the power went out, and we had a couple days, so that became a priority, and then we had another deal, and the tornado became a priority, so. Task order three, if I'm saying that correctly, was finally to complete an entire evaluation of our electric grid system. And CEC came to us about two weeks ago and sat down with Garrett, Todd, and myself. Todd and Garrett have been meeting with them regularly. I was very, very concerned about a ridiculously high price tag. We don't have a number, and it's not as bad as I thought it was going to be as far as just looking at the scope of work, considering what we'll be able to do with it. So tonight, we've asked them to come, much like you all heard from Garver two weeks ago on the wastewater master plan. So we've got a great group here. These guys are fantastic. Their brains work in ways that I don't know how they do it, but they're gonna kinda give us a brief overview of the priorities, what we need to do. There's about eight total phases that we need to go through or steps. I'll let them touch on that and phase that in, so we'll bring Paul and his group and let him introduce it, and Todd's been working with them hand-in-hand, as has Garrett. So pretty excited about this, because this is a step forward for us, and it will finally give us the direction we need for the power grid.
Thank you, John. And I'd like to thank the council for, excuse me, inviting us to your meeting this evening, so we could explain the master plan to you, entertain any questions. I'm Paul Reese, so I'm in our distribution engineering department, the power distribution engineering department. I'm joined by Justin Blue, who's one of my engineers. Randall Knowles is also with us this evening. He's our, is his development practice, uh, leader. So we'll begin. First slide here, I think, is a quote from, is appropriate that we're in Claremore? Oh, I get that. Okay, yeah. That we bring a quote from Will Rogers in here, so even if you're on track, on the right track, you'll get run over if you just sit there. So the idea is, your electric system in Claremore's been around since early statehood. In fact, Claremore Light and ICE Company was started in nineteen oh four. And so ever since that time, that system's been built on to add the need for electric power, and over time, it's grown with the city. But as it's grown with the city, it's reaching a point, and as you guys know, it's reached a point where the demand for power is beginning to exceed the availability or the capacity as it stands today, as that infrastructure is, stands today. Additionally, I think everybody's aware that in the past, the city of Claremore has probably, we were speaking earlier about Senator Mullen being here and the disruption in service, so power quality and reliability is very important to the city as well. And we also realize too, that with the city's plans for growth and bringing in new, building the community and bringing in new industry and all, that there's a need for making sure that your power grid can handle that demand for the new growth also. Going back, so realizing what it is today, and realizing that the future, the vision for the future is being a regional job center, an educational, and industrial base, we're looking for a way to balance aging infrastructure with those new growth demands. And I mean, if you didn't know, some of the things about your grid system is there's nearly nine thousand poles and over thirteen thousand meters, and you have five substations that are supporting this today. But still, you've got the consistent load growth, and Todd's group and Garrett, Todd, are building out their systems for that on an incremental basis, but at some point, you'll reach a, you'd discover that you've got congestion on your system, and particularly, we talked about substation two earlier, mentioned substation two. We helped the city at that point figure out how to move load around on the system to provide capacity that was needed in that particular area. But what we, what you guys were experiencing in that industrial area there is also being seen in other places on the system as well. So realizing that the need for industrial capacity for the electrical power, realizing also that there's, you guys have experienced voltage issues in certain points of your system, on the extremities of the system, and realizing too, and it's not on the bullet up here, that there's reliability issues, and really looking towards the future and what the plan is for the future, we wanted to help you guys put together a plan for that. So we sat down with Garrett and Todd and talked through what it is that CEC could do for you. So basically, what we wanted to do is understand enough about your system, take your records, model that in a system, so we could do load analysis, figure out where the congestion was on the system, where your constraints were. And the outcome of that is we found that there was a need to balance some of the load, both across the substations that are kinda centers for that power and the load areas, and also across the lines. So you've got a three-phase system, and balancing that out, without the balancing, you run into issues with capacity, you run into issues with voltage quality. Fuse coordination is a big deal, so having the right system protection on your system, so that when you have faults or disturbances, that it doesn't, that not the entire, that all the customers on a given circuit are affected by that, only those. So isolating that too, where the fault is as closely as possible. Allowing for cap, capacity upgrades, so there's some work to be done there, that is for growth in certain areas, but mainly in the areas where you really intend to or expect large growth, the large commercial and industrial areas in particular. So with that comes a bit of system reconfiguration, some equipment upgrades. Part of that is we looked at the loading on your service transformers and found that there were a number of service transformers that were exceeding a hundred percent of their capacity. That's okay to an extent, but the more they're overloaded, the, it degrades the life of those service transformers. And so that's a reliability issue as well. And then realizing that to meet the future demand for growth in the kinda south and the western parts of the city, the siting for a substation, I think the city had a site located, so we validated that. And how would that integrate into the rest of the grid system for the city, and then modeling that in such a way that we would know what that reconfiguration was to make that a part of the system, so there was a true balance in that. The balance gives you a better level of service, but it also allows the city, in the event of disturbances or just for planned maintenance or work on the system, allows you to move the load around on your grid system, so that you can do that work, and you can avoid the disruptions or minimize the disruptions to the connected customers. So a couple things that we found out. The loading on the substations, forecasting the load increases in the areas through twenty thirty, that there were several substations, kinda the dotted ellipse there, that would be overloaded or near full loading. There was also some opportunity with Sub Three West. Over to the right, it's just a list, a small list, or a very small subset of the list of transformers that exceeded a hundred percent of their nameplate capacity. But going, looking at the bullets at the top, so we found limited circuit capacity in areas. Through the model, we found phase imbalances, and as I mentioned earlier, circuit imbalances. We had voltage issues that showed up on that, and Todd and Garrett are aware of some of the areas that have been problem areas. And insufficient fault isolation for some areas. And insufficient fault isolation for some areas. And then, challenges with the load density. And that is, I've got a high density of load and it may be growing in that area and my options for moving load around to other parts of the system were limited. So, what do we do to meet those challenges? And that's some of what the recommendations are that we brought to the city. So, I'm gonna let Justin talk through some of the solutions. Justin's really the smart guy in the bunch here today. And that, with the exception of the council here. But, Justin will talk through some of the capacity improvements that we recommend, the upgrades, phase balancing, the ties to the feeders. So, those feeder ties again allow you flexibility on the system to move load around. They also help you when you do have a disturbance on the system to isolate that fault and put the rest of the customers that might have been, where services interrupted, back online while you repair that disturbance or that failure in the system. The fuse coordination. And then, talk a little bit about the new substations.
Thank you, Paul. So, there are a few different ways that we could have broken down the information. We chose to kind of break it down. You see on the bottom, there's capacity, voltage, phase balancing, feeder ties, fuse coordination and the new substation. There's a couple of other points that we covered in our report and presentation with Claremore and their power department. But, these kind of show the issues that were addressed. Now, the mitigation steps to address those issues often come hand in hand with one another. What I mean is, solutions that address some of the voltage issues you see on some of those customers on farther reaches of the city. Those same mitigation steps are taken to address the phase balancing. But, I'll talk on a few of those. On the right side of the screen, you can see actually a model of the entire electric system in Claremore, broken up by the different circuits. And, one of the biggest challenges that Claremore's electric system has is towards the southwest of the system, there is anticipated growth, the largest anticipated growth compared to the rest of the system. But, the voltage quality issues are mostly concentrated in the north and in the northeast and somewhat to the east. So, one of the goals of the study was to find a way to address those voltage quality issues, but not just by throwing a lot of capacity to the northeast because the capacity is needed in the southwest as well. So, what you see is a lot of our recommendations focusing on adding the capacity to the southwest while doing the equipment upgrades, the phase balancing, moving of load in the northeast to allow for sufficient voltage quality and capacity on the primary lines to the north and northeast. But also, preparing for the future substation that will be coming along in the future. So, here's another diagram, kind of just breaking down the imbalances across the system. So, we tried to open up capacity. We looked at the substation transformers and then the individual circuits to make sure that not only are the substation transformers having a more balanced percentage of their load utilized now and in the future with growth, but also the circuits because whenever you have an overloaded circuit, it makes it difficult for switching, having backup feeds and focuses a lot of the issues on that circuit. You're seeing more voltage drop, you're seeing the primary cable having capacity issues along with other issues that are associated with that. So, balancing the system, moving load around, that's just, you know, opening and closing switches, adding switches, adding often just small tie lines and feeds to give you the routing to move that load. That was mostly what's focused in this section to accomplish that. But then, to address some of the voltage quality concerns, voltage drop, that's a little bit more extensive. Some of that included upgrading feeder lines, so that's the cables, making them, finding areas where they need to be replaced with larger cables, that reduces your voltage drop, keeps it above the limits that you see there. You can see on that image right there, that heat map of voltage emphasizing the red being the lower voltages in contrast to the blue, closer to the substations, closer to the heart of town. You can definitely see where the biggest issues are to the north and to the northeast. That's a combination of largely loaded circuits along with long distance feeds. So, it's that distance, high load and insufficient conductor sizing for that load which in combination creates some large voltage issues. And, that's what we called to address. We called for upgrading the feeders, converting single-phase laterals to three-phase laterals. So, it's balancing the load on all the phases instead of just having one singular phase carry an unproportionate amount of the load. We added some voltage regulation. So, what that is, there, it's voltage regulator, voltage regulators are equipment that you install on the primary line and they do kind of what they sound like they do. They regulate the voltage back up to the necessary level, sometimes back up to what you would see at the substation coming out. And then, that is able to help address some of those voltage concerns. In some of those places, it was preferred to try to find ways to balance the load rather than adding voltage regulators. But, the extent that would be needed to solve the voltage quality concerns needed voltage regulators, there wasn't enough that could be done otherwise. So, we recommended a few locations where that was necessary and the most economical. And then, phase balancing, so that transitions, oh, here's another diagram showing some of those values increasing before Task Order Three and then after Task Order Three. And that's also, so you have the 2024 values, that's kind of a conservative estimate of what those values look like right now in model. And then, estimated 2030 values with load growth and very conservative. Even then, with what we were proposing, we were able to bring that back up to some of the necessary values that you see recommended by NEC and NESC. But anyways, continuing on to phase balancing. This is a neat image on the right, you can see a graph really demonstrating what that voltage imbalance looks like, the necessity and need to bring that, bring that load balance between the phases because otherwise, you can quickly have, for instance, in this example, one phase a lot heavier loaded than the others and then your customers on that, for example, Phase C are going to see some pretty large concerns. So, phase balancing is one of the easiest ways you can improve a lot of these metrics, voltage drop and capacity and whatnot, because you're just changing what phase things are fed from. You're not having to upgrade equipment and you're able to solve a lot of the issues that you're seeing. And this also helps a lot of customers who have three-phase equipment. We've recommended a number of areas that could benefit from feeder ties. So, feeder ties do a few things, they allow you resiliency. If they're switching that necessary backup feeds to get to certain areas, these can allow for, allow for that load to be transferred to backup circuits in case of outages or maintenance. And also, it does a number to prepare the system for the future load and in the future substation that will be coming online. Because ideally, what we want is whenever that new capacity is added, a few years down the line with Substation Six, what you want is to not have to build Substation Six and all the distribution infrastructure needed with it, so the different ties and whatnot at the same time. So, this kind of prepares the system to be able to just open and close the switches whenever SubSix comes around and be able to quickly transition that load over. One of the other large topics that we tackled, that we were able to provide recommendations for was the fuse coordination on Claremore's system. Paul kind of touched on this a little bit, but the idea of the fuse coordination is just to make sure that if wherever there's a fault, it's isolated in the best way possible. If there's a fault on one customer, that's not affecting everybody on the entire system. So, we identified areas that could most benefit from having fuses added. And then, we addressed how to better coordinate the fuses that are existing on their system. So, what that involves, what that involves is we provided fuse coordination schemes, what fuses could coordinate with each other and with the recloser settings within the substations. And with this, you should be able to see a lot of improvements with the outages not affecting everyone. Whenever one tree limb falls in one person's backyard, the circuit can stay online, it's isolated to just the lateral where that occurred. And, there's also some trip saver, so what that is, is recloser settings downstream of the substation. There are some of those settings that we recommended and locations that we addressed as well. And then, the last main topic that we addressed was the new substation location. So, we worked with the city of Claremore on a few different locations, kind of figuring out what would have the best benefit and prioritizing what the city of Claremore was already looking at for some of their preferred locations, not just for the benefit of the load growth, but also for, you know, the impact on some of the areas, the different parts of town, trying to find what works best for the city and the residents there. And I think we found some locations that really worked for all those. So, it's in good locations where there's existing distribution infrastructure. There's not comparatively as much work that would need to be done to then bring the capacity to that substation, all that load to the substation. There's of course, work to be done, but a lot of the areas surrounding these new substation locations have a lot of feeder lines, large conductor that's prepared to handle the load coming in as well as the switching and kind of centered at the heart of where a lot of that future added load is predicted to be. And you can see here, kind of the before and after of what we estimate 2030 load to be conservatively with load growths before Substation Six is added and also before the other balancing that was mentioned before. And then, after Substation and Task Order Three is implemented, bringing down the capacity on all of those substations and then allowing for, at that point, the load to be kind of reevaluated, see what, what results, how they compare with what was predicted and the growth that was actually seen at that point. And then, you can move forward from there with seeing, is there more opportunities for capacity to be added? You know, what are the new challenges that we're facing? And we're already working with the city of Claremore on some other capacity opportunities that could, that could be added to the system. So, with that, kind of the theme of this is invest now, reap later. You want to put the money in now and the time and the resources because later on, kinda like you saw with Garrett's presentation earlier, you can quickly stretch yourself too thin if you don't look five years down the line or more. And then, you get to that point and now you're in an issue. And the amount of time and money it takes to implement a lot of the needed infrastructure for their, for a distribution system is quite expensive. So, the needed tie lines, the time it takes to do the analysis, fuse coordination, transformer sizing, it takes a lot of time and takes a lot of energy. So, if you can look ahead now and be prepared for all the challenges that are going to be coming ahead in the next five years and some of the challenges you're facing now, you're setting yourself up for success. And I think that's, that's really what we tried to do with the city of Claremore's electric department, try to set them up for success and give them some tools to better regulate and monitor their system. Some of those things that we provided for them were some mapping of their system electric model as well as a GIS map that if they wanted, they could utilize to track their system. And hopefully, from here, we can continue to help the city of Claremore with whatever they might like to utilize us for and improving their system.
I'd like to point out one thing too here. So, as we talk about 2030, some of the, the Substation Six is, the equipment in Substation Six is both expensive, but it also takes a long time to get that in hand. Some of that could take two years or better, once you say you want it and you order it from manufacturer. So, it's important to be looking out five years into the future to know what it's gonna take to get where, to where you wanna be at that time. So, there are a number of recommendations in here that can be done tomorrow, virtually. But, there are some of that that will take much longer. And so, planning ahead, having that plan and knowing, you know, what it's gonna, what it costs and what the timelines are for those kinds of, kinda laying that out in your plan is pretty important.
That's why the 2030 was chosen. It's, it's, it gives you time to start investing and working towards Substation Six now with a little bit of room to work with. But really, you're preparing the system ideally for 2030, just before Substation Six is operational. And, at that point, Substation Six is needed. And, and then, at that point, Substation Six would come along and give you some more time to prepare for whatever the future has after that.
So, questions?
I would just, real quick, and comment so you all kinda know how our presentation went. One, we're very grateful because we've always said about this system, we don't know what we don't know. And you can imagine through transition and multiple people that have been here, other than Todd, who's been here since, I think he was born and then just went to work as alignment. But, you know, over the course of the last 30 years, but as Paul indicated, in 1904. So, one of the things that I have asked them, as you all know, one of the major projects in this year's budget is recircuiting a bunch of the line work going up to north and east that is affected by the low voltage. So, that's about a three plus million dollar project we're trying to put together now. But, and I'm sure you all may or may not have questions, but I have, we spoke afterwards and what I would like to do, there is a much more comprehensive document with all of this stuff that we're happy to share with you all. Gets very, very technical, but identifies steps and phases that need to take place. In order for, in my opinion, in order for our power and light folks to continue to do the things that they're doing, work on the new system upgrades and respond, I have asked CEC to look at what it would take to take their recommendations and essentially develop a phase and costing plan for us to do one big project like we talked about once we passed, if we passed the one penny as far as a very comprehensive capital project. It is fair to say, I would think that that project would take multiple years to complete. But, so, they are working towards that with Todd and Garrett to say, look, here are all the things we talked about in this. And meanwhile, Todd and his crew continue to do things. And so, if something happens and it overlaps, it can correspond and they pull that out and do this. But, we've talked about that. So, that's kinda where we're going on the next step. We still don't know what that looks like, but we certainly know that you can tell by the numbers and the capacity at which we're at substations, it's not a question of if we do something, it's how quickly can we get something done. So, we'll be working with them to develop that plan and bring something fairly comprehensive to the council that's gonna involve funding package and a few other things with some other infrastructure. But, certainly, all of the phasing, the fuse, the circuitry. Well, there's several different, there's multiple steps inside of different phases and then that's, that would go on way too long here this evening because it's very technical. But, and we also talked about adding some capacity in existing substations as part of that project as well. So, all of our current substations are 28.
NVA.
Yeah, NVA, yeah, thank you. So, Substation Six would also be a 28th NVA substation, but we talked about adding some capacity at one of the substations, probably Substation One just to help with that load too, just in some failsafe and some breathing space. So, with that, I'm sure you all have questions, but they are working on some things for us that will be a system-wide comprehensive. So, it would be, I foresee us awarding at some point in the future, a very large contract So, it would be, I foresee us awarding at some point in the future, a very large contract to get all this done with one responsible vendor and having CEC walk in and hand with us through that.
Am I correct in, there's a certain amount of power that we lose through our power line system as we deliver to customers? Will these improvements reduce the loss that we have or will it impact that at all?
It does improve that. It does. So, those line losses that you're talking about do exist when you have, so increasing the wire size reduces the, if you will, the resistance and then from that, the losses that you get in the line, moving the load closer or finding areas of the system where you can supply or meet the demand a lot easier. So, reconfiguring the system through the switching and the balancing helps that, that going from a single-phase line to a three-phase line where you spread the, the, the power, the supply of power over three lines. So, it's all down the same pole line, but now you've got three wires to get it there. The lower your, the lower your current, the, the lower that your line losses are.
It's more efficient?
Yes, it is more efficient, yes.
And our annual tree trimming program is, I mean, the biggest thing right now is, I mean, if people don't realize, when a limb blows into a, even, that's line loss. That takes power away from it. So, we've been, that's why we've been so diligent with that as well. But that doesn't solve the fact that we have undersized wire and we have voltage issues. And to that, we've already, voltage regulators on that north and east side town, we have the most problems headed up towards Sequoia. We've actually already ordered, we're waiting for voltage regulators to come in. We visited with GRDA to make sure they're compatible with the systems that they can read and that will help us install those. And that's just until we can get through a lot of that line replacement.
I noted that, I noticed that substation three west was significantly lower on the usage. Can I ask why is that? Is it because of the less in population or can we now utilize, obviously there were some substations that were extremely over voltage?
So, I'm going to, substation three is primarily what serves a lot of east, but also the industrial sector. So, there's been some, there's been circuits that some of those big companies are large users and they're on their individual circuits. There's also capacity there that we hold and save because we need it and it's not timing. But there's, there's a lot going on with that. Sub three is also what feeds everything that goes out to the east where we have problems and up north. So, a lot of that is intentional and then a lot of the work that we're doing right now with what we call the Baker Hughes project is to take some of that load off of one of their facilities on the west side and push it over onto the substation that the city built for them years ago. It's on the east side and so that will also, we haven't incorporated that in yet because we have to have conversations with them, but there is a lot of capacity over there on that substation that we don't access or use.
And we can't use it because even though some are over.
Well, there's some, there's a conversation there that may help us in the future with that. But there's a lot of the industrial is on that substation.
Good to know.
But, but there is, I think the 2030 plan did have.
Yes.
In it, the, the recommendation to move some load around and utilize some of, it was significantly lower.
Significantly, and I noticed some were significantly over and I was like, what or why it was being not utilized, but I understand what John is saying.
Right. So, actually, I mean, as John points out, that asset, those assets in that substation were there with a primary purpose, but there is opportunity there to utilize some of the available capacity.
And in all fairness, over the years, I mean, you know, when a big company comes in and says, we're going to build all this, we're going to bring in thousands, we need, yeah, absolutely, you know, we need to help you out and then those things don't pan out or you have an industry that they're in that does this and they don't have the usage and so, all of that's happened. Then you get another company that's here, hey, we need all this extra capacity, so we do, we do a build out for them or we identify and isolate them on a circuit and take them off this and then that company sells and goes to Canada and somebody else moves it. I mean, there's a lot of maneuvering that's gone out in the industrial park over the years, so.
It'd be nice to be able to utilize it when one of the other substations is maxed.
Yeah. And they did us a great favor. They're right. When we had issues with substation two and the, they, they came in and looked at all that, how can we balance? And that was really, that second big task order was helping us rebalance all that. And it made a huge difference in our system. You guys have been fantastic.
I'd like to point out though, I mean, it's easy for us to go and sit behind the computer and look at our computer models and say, this is what you need, but not without working with Todd and Garrett and saying, how are you guys operating the system and really where, where are the issues that you have? And that, that's really been a pleasure for us is that's helped us to come up with not only suitable solutions, but reasonable solutions, right?
And because of that guidance, the things that they were able to identify that we in-house don't have that skill set, the program, Todd and his guys were able to work with and do that in-house, the rebound, that, all of that. Now, moving forward, we're talking about constructing new line and we can do all those things, but it's much like the Heritage Hill project. We were doing that, we were getting through a couple of pieces of property and then we get called away for a storm event. It would have taken us years to do the Heritage Hills project. So, we talk about just basically new construction and all, I think it's imperative that we put together a comprehensive large package and say, look, how can we go out and bid this out and have the absolute experts in new construction phasing out to help us and work with an engineer that we trust. That way Todd's guys can continue to respond to squirrels and lightning, but not tornadoes. We will not have another tornado calling that now.
Don't even say that. And so, I, it would, I wanted to say too that, I mean, the situation that the city of Claremore is in, this is not dire straits right now. This is, this is looking ahead. That's good. And, but you guys are in, you know, a similar situation to many other cities and towns in, in the state of Oklahoma where the, the infrastructure was, was first built many years ago and it expanded with the growth of the city and you, many cities and, and small towns are running into some of the same, same issues if, if they continue to grow.
That's good. We're going to be progressive down the road in the future.
Well, the city, I mean, the city of Claremore is in a good spot. I mean, you're near a much larger city, you're off an interstate, you're in Port of Tusa. I mean, there's a lot of things working for the city, the way I see it and I've had the pleasure of discovering that, working with you guys, but yeah, I, I think you guys have got a good vision for the future and I think it's realistic.
Nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Thank you.
Staff reports, Mr. Marick.
I have none.
Current business, do we give motion to accept the consent items as printed?
Oh, I apologize. Tomorrow is National Night Out.
Yes.
Six PM.
Six thirty.
Six thirty at Claremore Lake Park. It's projected to stay under 100 degrees, so we shouldn't be moving it or canceling it this year. So, always a great event. CPD does a great job and I can remember the inordinate amount of school supplies and pizza we handed out last year to kids and families, but come out, check it out, lots of vendors, lots of community resources, live music from the Bison Band locally and come out and give the community an opportunity to interact with our law enforcement officers who are top-notch. Thank you, Stan.
Be my puppies. Okay.
Current business, do we have a motion to accept the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Second. Motion's second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Wolfie.
Yes.
Max Baden.
Yes.
Autumn.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Final item number three, discussion of possible action on order number 2025-14, declaring certain property contained within the northwest quarter as printed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you recall, the council authorized us and we moved forward with the purchase of a piece of property for an economic development venture that has not yet been announced, but we did close on that property. And the sale of that property from us to the economic development partner announcement is impending. However, we have a provision in our charter, while, a good provision to have, the dollar amount is a little low, so if we find that we have surplus property, we are required that anything over, anything of value of $25,000 or more, which you can't even buy a single residential lot in the original part of town for it, we have to basically provide a temporary ordinance and publish that within 10 days of passage of the ordinance and then in 30 days when it goes into effect, we can then sell the property. So, this is us asking you to authorize this temporary ordinance so that we can enter into a purchase-sale agreement sometime in the next month to 45 days with the entity and close on that property. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion approved and second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Wolfie.
Yes.
Max Baden.
Yes.
Autumn.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Autumn.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Callender.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Wolfie.
Yes.
Your adjourned.